I guess we'd better get the show on the road, huh, folks? Y'all ready?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. All right, we'll go ahead and call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the town of Superior. Commissioner Harden, can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Chairperson Jim Satell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momarts.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Harden here, Mark Laces.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Present.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Woody. Attorney Hillary Graham.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
And Planner Fred Fox.
Thanks, Phyllis. Has everybody received the packet with the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Any changes to the agenda? Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Laces, second. Commissioner Malia, all those in favor? Aye. All right. Motion's carried. Next item is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. I'm assuming we don't have any public comment on that. Okay. Next item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 6, 2016 meeting. Did anybody, first of all, has everybody received the minutes and did anybody have any changes they wish to make? Okay. Could we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the September 6, 2016 meeting.
Commissioner Laces, second. Commissioner Momarts, all those in favor? Aye. All right. All right, motion's carried. Okay, the next item is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of an amendment to the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, Ranch Creek filing 17C from Regional Activity Center zoning to residential zoning. We'll go ahead and call the public hearing. Is there proof of publication?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does staff wish to make a presentation?
Sure, thank you. Stephen Williams, Town Staff. Agenda item six as stated is the rezoning slash PUD amendment request for Lot 1, Block 1 filing 17 of the Rock Creek Ranch PD. This map illustrates the location of all of filing 17C in white. Can we?
Yes.
Top light, sorry. The properties within the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development, it lies north of Colton Road and between Rock Creek Parkway and West Flatiron Crossing Drive. Representatives of Rock Creek Ranch, or Rock Creek Development, excuse me, are proposing to rezone a portion of this lot, or this parcel, Lot 1, to R2A, which is the medium-density multifamily residential zoning designation within the Rock Creek PD. In total, filing 17 encompasses 13.6 acres of undeveloped land. Only Lot 1, Block 1, shown here in red, would be rezoned should this application be approved. Lots 2 and 3 would remain governed by RAC zoning and as defined by the PD. This proposal is limited to a rezone request only. No development is proposed. Subsequent final plot site plan reviews would be required to develop any of the three lots within filing 17C. Although this parcel is undeveloped, the zoning for the property has changed over the years from its original PD zoning designation of RAC in 1987 to community activity zoning designation in 1994, and then back to RAC zoning in 2009. The initial zoning change that occurred in 1994 was done when Simpson Housing owned the property. They're the ones that developed Elf, or Horizon Apartments, excuse me, which is now known as Bell Flatirons, to the north and to the west of the property. They requested and were approved for rezoning to the community activity center zoning to be more compatible with the multifamily residential housing that they had already constructed. After our current applicant, Rock Creek Development, acquired the property in 2008, they pursued and were approved to rezone the site back to RAC to allow for more commercial development flexibility. The same applicant is now requesting to rezone Lot 1, as we've stated, which covers the northern and western portion of the site from RAC to R2A zoning to allow for the multifamily development. Rock Creek Ranch representatives made a concept plan to the board in 2015 regarding their current plans for this property. And earlier this year, they also proposed and received approvals for a subdivision plat and a final plat site plan for related infrastructure. The subdivision plat created the three lots shown, Lot 1 again for the multifamily use, and lots 2 and 3 to the east, which the applicants clarified they intend to develop with hotel lots, or with two hotels, excuse me. But it is just commercial zoning, so there's no real obligation for any particular commercial use on these properties. As many of you may recall, the final plat site plan portion of this application was limited to horizontal infrastructure improvements. It included grade work for drainage, the construction of a privately-owned street, which is included within tract A, and the required utility infrastructure improvements to serve the proposed lots, which would generally be extended from Tyler Drive and run east along the northern portion of Colton Road. Both the town and the applicant have understood that the multifamily residential portion of this proposal would require rezoning Lot 1 because of Regional Activity Center, the current Regional Activity Center classification does not allow for residential uses. The applicant, however, initially proposed to come back and process a rezoning application as part of a final plat site plan application to develop one of the two commercial lots. Tonight's rezoning is being presented independent of any other application. As clarified in the applicant's project narrative, the impetus for this change and the rezone of Lot 1 now is to enhance the marketability of lots 1 and, or of lots 2 and 3 by allowing them to install the infrastructure for the entire property. The applicant's PUD amendment sheet shown here summarizes their request and tracks how their proposal fits in within the zoning allowances that have been afforded to Rock Creek Ranch as a whole. The plan development for Rock Creek Ranch established three broad commercial zoning term designations termed regional, community, and neighborhood activity centers, which generally range from most to least intense. It also established four residential zone districts, R1A and R1B, as well as R2A and R2B, which are distinguished primarily by density allowances and range from least to most dense. In short, the applicant is requesting to rezone Lot 1 from the most intensive commercial use to the second most dense residential classification within the PD. The PD clarifies that RAC zoning was designed to serve regional commercial needs and contain the broader scope of compatible commercial uses, including hotels, convention centers, job centers, and light industry. At the time the zoning was applied for in 1987, the surrounding area was largely undeveloped and the west corridor of the, or the 470 Loop was expected to be built to the south and east of the site. R2A zoning conversely is designed to provide a framework for medium-density residential uses. This classification affords a maximum building height of 50 feet and a maximum density of 18 dwelling units per acre. As this aerial illustrates, the parcel is now surrounded by development. The area shaded in blue lies within Broomfield. Flatirons Mall is directly east, and it's largely commercial in nature, while the area immediately to the north and west is within Superior and developed with a medium-density residential that is now Bell Flatirons. To approve a rezoning request, the code requires that the applicant demonstrate that the property can be served by water and sewer, and for the town to find that the request furthers the goals of the comprehensive plan and other approved plans. The final plat site plan that we processed earlier this year clarified how this property would be served by wet utilities. Staff has also reviewed this proposal for conformance with the comprehensive plan and the governing Rock Creek PD. The comprehensive plan designates this property as opportunity area number nine. The preferred land uses within that opportunity area are commercial, office, retail, and hotel uses. The comprehensive plan policy, however, also instructs that compatibility with adjacent residences and open space be ensured. As discussed previously, the PD for Rock Creek allows a number of commercial and residential uses, and was approved for both more commercial and more residential development than currently exists within Rock Creek. This PD designates the broader area, the original PD, and so since 1987, this general area, which extends all the way up to where Bell Flatirons kind of stops, designated this entire area as either R2A or RAC. And so either one of those zonings is still within the framework of the PD. As this aerial illustrates, the site has primarily been developed with the R2A already. In short, town policy documents support either residential or commercial use of the property, and because the proposal falls within the existing development pattern and retains the opportunity for commercial development to the east, as well as proposes a complementary residential use to the north and west, staff is supportive of the request. Staff is also supportive of the applicant's request. There's a couple of exceptions that are kind of outlined in the application. The first one is to reduce the open space designation requirement from 45 to 40%, which is illustrated on the table included on their, on their PUD amendment plan. Staff does not have any concerns about this proposed 5% reduction to the dedicated open space requirement, particularly given the applicant's clarification that they're not going to meet or need their full 18 dwelling units per acre. They're restricting themselves to 14 dwelling units per acre. And given the context that if Lot 1 were to develop under the RAC zoning, only a 20% open space dedication would apply. So staff used the rezoning proposal, which would preserve an additional 20% of this parcel for open space, particularly given its proximity to Autry Reservoir, as a benefit to the application. Staff, however, is requiring that the plan sheet be updated to also reflect that there's a 20-foot setback requirement from open space that is required along the northern property line bordering the Autry Reservoir. Staff understands the applicant's intent is to request an exception from the standard, but feels that such a request is more appropriate at a time when we have a final plat site plan to consider and additional context to consider that request against. Staff finally is recommending that the applicant's request for the 14 dwelling units per acre, it's shown on this plan, but it's not highlighted as an exception, so we're just preferring that it kind of be, have an asterisk, kind of like the open space requirement showing that there is an exceptional standard requested. The applicant has also included this conceptual site plan and land use summary table for general reference. Final designs and layouts will be reviewed through a formal development application, which will be required for each of these lots. This illustration, however, generally provides some idea of how Lot 1 could develop with the density proposed and how lots 2 and 3, or at least Lot 3, may develop with a hotel. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions outlined in staff's memo and summarized tonight. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Does anybody have any questions they want to raise with staff at this time?
I have one question. Stephen, could you please explain what was originally the concept for regional activity center zoning, or the preferred uses?
Yeah, so regional activity center, and I should have included, actually, I think I may have, I don't have the map, but I have a different map. And here, so this is facing north to the left over here, and this is, this parcel is the original, I think this map was actually created like in the 1990s. So it says that it's a regional activity center, and it also, it's harder to see R2A zoning here for this entire area. This is Colton Road, and this is the end of, basically where West Flatiron Crossings was developed. But the intent of RAC zoning, you'll see it kind of anywhere near the freeway or near a gateway into town. In this case, this is where the 470 was intended to be built, or thought was going to be built when they planned out Rock Creek. So anything near a major roadway was considered a regional activity center, and regional meant serving, you know, beyond the needs of Superior, whereas the other two classifications, community was more community-wide, and neighborhood was more, you know, something like along this corner would serve this general neighborhood, and we'd install something else along this corner to serve this neighborhood. So that's the, the simple explanation. If you want the actual, like, uses that are allowed within each, I have the PD I can read them to you.
So if I understand correctly, so the original intent was back when 470 was originally anticipated to connect through and loop all around through Jefferson County, that there would be a highway going through there and people getting off the highway and being able to take, you know?
Right.
Use amenities that would be typically, you know, highway travel plus also local uses as well.
Correct. Yeah, so hotels, convention centers even, like job centers, so I mean, it was, it's an intense, I don't know that anywhere in Superior has developed to the extent that the regional activity center would allow. You know, our Safeway Center is on CAC, and that's kind of probably the most dense commercial area we have within Rock Creek Ranch. And then it's just, I mean, but it's also kind of speaks to the fact that this document, you know, was created in 1970 when it was a blank slate, and then you see the aerial and you realize that there's some, there's some merit to that zoning, you know, it's on the edge of town, it's surrounded by commercial development now, but, so I think the hotels and those type of uses are still, I mean, there's a reason we didn't rezone it or downzone it, or although we did, we didn't stick with the CAC. So there's a reason for that commercial zoning as well, but then you see the context of what's been developed within Superior, and it's all multifamily residential, so it could really kind of go either way.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I'll hold my questions till after the applicant presentation and get answered.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
I do. Good evening, Gary Rohr, President, Resolute Investments, 6650 East Idaho Avenue in Greenwood Village. Thank you, Commission members. Thanks for having me back here again tonight. It's been a long journey together, I feel, and we're still on it together. I'm not going to make a long presentation tonight because you've heard a lot about how we got where we are, so sort of more questions than presentation, but from the last time we were here, I was here in front of you until tonight, we've had some developments, so I want to bring up to speed on those. Stephen, if you'd go to the next slide. So you're all very familiar with this concept plan, and we set out as of last September, if you recall, we came with a concept plan meeting in front of the board with exactly this. I mean, it may be slightly different, but it was certainly this concept, and we've been working towards this ever since. So we have a really significant interest from townhouse, townhome developers here for sale, high-end product. This is a very unique site, as I've expressed before, particularly because of the, of the views across the lake to the Flatirons and to Long Peak. It's just incredible, actually. I mean, it's really stunning. You certainly can get mountain views in Colorado, of course, and once in a while you can get water views, but to have these kind of views with both is just phenomenal. So we have all kinds of interest here, and as we've talked with you all before and the town board and town staff, we've said, we've kind of pushed that interest back. We've said, "Commercial, commercial, we've got to get a hotel down here," and we've worked really hard on the hotel to bring it all to you together, and that was Plan A. And we're here with Plan B tonight, not Plan A, and I'm going to tell you why. So for us to put a hotel under contract, which we've had and still do, although we've sent them a default letter, we have a hotel under contract here for a year now. So for us to put a hotel under contract here is pretty, it's fairly complicated, and it goes like this. Let me back up just a little bit. Typically, if you're going to sell a pad to a hotel group, you, they want 60 days due diligence, and then they close in 30 days, and they want to go build a hotel, go pull a permit, you know, build a hotel, that's how it works. And they're in town, if they're from out of town, they're looking for that kind of purchase, that's what they're looking for. And here, we have to tell a completely different story. We have to tell a story that says, "Well, we own 13.6 acres, and we're going to develop it all at once." And when we develop it all at once, and it has to be developed at once, you can't develop, we certainly can't develop 13.6 acres for a two-and-a-half-acre user, for example, because we have to put the improvements in all the way across the front. We have to put, we have to loop utilities all the way through it. We have to put a road in. We have to do the, somewhere between 200 and 300,000 yards of dirt that had to be moved across this site, which all has to be done at once, not phasing. This site, because water goes downhill, it's pretty simple, this site goes from west to east. It goes pretty much from northwest down here to the east. So as part of the infrastructure improvements that we've got approved, that you recommended for approval on town board approved three months ago, we have a system of drainage that comes across and underneath the road and underneath here and collects here, and this is all water quality, and there's a retaining wall here, if you recall, because of the grade issues, and we do a lot of water quality here, and then this water quality pond that's in Broomfield. We've negotiated and worked with Broomfield, and town staff's been super helpful to make this whole 13.6 acres work together. So now that we have those drawings done and they've been approved, it's about, it's been priced, and it's about $2.5 million. So it's about $2.5 million for us to go do all these improvements across the whole site. So the conversation, now to come back to the hotel group, the conversation with the hotel group goes, "We need you to go under contract with us, and the way that it works is we need you to close," and we've done this before on other parcels, so this isn't like we're making this up, but it's just more complicated. We say, "We need an escrow agreement. We need you to close, put the money into escrow. We use your money and our money," and we go do all these improvements, and they said, "Well, okay," but the, and the lawyers get involved like they're supposed to, and they said, "Well, what if you don't do the work? What happens to our money?" "Oh, then we have to negotiate self-help for them, and how are they going to come do the improvements if we don't do the improvements? And how do they know they're going to be done to our standards?" So there's engineer certifications involved. It's just complicated. It's just much, much more complicated than just coming and buying a pad to build a hotel. So these guys have been in our contract for a year. We started last September, literally a year, 13 months ago, with the town board. In that year, so we came back to them three months ago, and we said, "We're ready to go." You know, "We need your final development site plan, final plat site plan?" Final plat site plan. And they said, "In the year that we've been in our contract," and by the way, they have exactly an escrow agreement like I just described, it's a, instead of a 15-page contract, it's a 40-page contract. In that year that's gone by, the Hilton Garden Inn, which is what they wanted to do, is no longer available, according to them. I don't have really any way to independently evaluate that, but that's what they're saying. They're on the hook, I mean, we have, they have $50,000 non-refundable with us, so I certainly believe them, their hotel group, they just closed on a piece of ground out by DIA, which is just a buy-the-land, you know, kind of deal, and they're building some kind of Marriott product there. And they said that the brand that they wanted, the Hilton Garden, is not available, and they're apt to go away from the site. So they're really, I think they're going away, is what is, certainly appears to us. I have a, another LOI, which we got three weeks ago now, which I don't have a copy of, I'm happy to pass this round and make copy. This is an LOI from a group called the Thrash Group, totally different group out of Hattiesburg, Mississippi, and this is for a Hilton True brand, and it's a, they want a 60-day inspection and a 30-day close. I mean, again, the same kind, exact same kind of thing. We explained to them and sent them a draft contract of how this would work with the escrow agreements and all that, and they said, and they said, "No, thank you. We're going to go work on another site somewhere else." So we're looking at this sort of like it's a, what's Einstein's thing, you know, like stop doing the same thing and expecting different results. What we're proposing tonight is this, to rezone this half, then we will go have a pad to market here for this. We'll have two pads upon the completion of all these improvements to market here, and let's go do this differently, and let's go get this done in this cycle. I mean, I think last time I was in front of you, I said we're seventh inning of this cycle. We're at least the seventh or seven and a half inning, you know, bottom of the seventh kind of deal now. We'll put our money where our mouth is, approve this rezone, and we will go and put in all these improvements in the first quarter or two of next year, the $2.5 million improvements, get all three of these ready to go so that we can get them done in this cycle. Next slide, Stephen. This is just reiterating what I just said. We, conceptual site plan, we've now obtained approval on the final plat and the horizontal infrastructure, final plat site plan, working on the rezoning here, talking to you tonight. We're already marketing, but have something to market as we go forward, and we'll install the infrastructure first half of next year. I could carry on more, but that's, that's it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have a few questions, and I'll direct it at whoever is the appropriate person to answer. Curious if you referred the application to BVSD, if they are okay or knowledge additional residential?
We, I don't know that we did. That's a good question. I'd have to double-check.
Okay.
The referral.
And then the open space or effective setback, my question is just specific to that northern property line. What's the, a rough distance from the property line to the edge of water, so kind of what would the effective setback from water's edge be?
I can, I just looked at that, Stephen, so if I can answer it, or if you want to, either way. So the reason we, so there's a, per code, if I'm saying that right, Stephen, you can correct me, obviously, there's a 20-foot setback from open space required at our property line, and you can see the property line here, down here, and you see quite a bit of green on the other side of it.
Right.
So the reason we're asking, we were asking for 10 feet instead of 20 is because on the other side of our property line is somewhere between 25 and 35 feet before you get to the walking path.
Oh, okay.
And then it's another 40 or 50 feet before you get to the water. So there's, there's significant, even though we would be going from 20 feet to 10 feet, there's probably 75, 85, I mean, there's a long ways to the, to the water and to the walking path, which isn't going to be moved. So it's sort of an artificial, we, and this site gets really tight up in here, and all we're doing, in our opinion, is limit, is making the townhomes 10 feet shorter.
No, I'm supportive of that reduction, just given that amount of distance in there, so I just kind of wanted to clarify that, what that was. And in your opinion, are the architectural standards for multifamily in the Rock Creek PD appropriate for what you'd like to do? I know that there are, or what architectural standards and site design standards are going to be applied to any new development here?
It would be the Rock Creek, yeah, and it's within Rock Creek, so those are the development standards, but we'll look at it in relation to, you know, just through the final plat site plan process and compatibility with the surrounding architecture, I guess, within Horizons, but also 20 years, 30 years later than when that was built, so.
And then just one final clarification. The reduction in the dwelling units supersedes kind of that R2A, 18 dwelling units per acre, so what's noted on here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
The reason we did 14, R2A is 18, the reason we did 14 is because we just wanted, I mean, one of our values is integrity, and we just wanted to just do exactly what we said we're going to do. And 7.2 acres times 14 equals 100, and this is 100 units, and that's what we said we're going to do, so that's where it comes from.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, going back to the setback question, the property line, where at the, almost like at the saddle where it drops down, is the, is the property line dropping in that far, or are you actually, or will there be like 20 feet along that edge?
Talking about right here?
Yes.
It varies between, I think 10 feet is the closest, and it's kind of in this area, but then it gets closer in here, so it's not a consistent 10-foot.
Right.
But it...
So it varies between 10 and 20, or 10...
Probably 10 and 15.
15, okay. So it's not specifically...
That is, that is the property line.
Okay.
Right there. It is, it does drop down like this. I don't know if you can see it on here, but that walking path, it isn't really shown. You can't really see it on there. You can see it on Google Earth, of course, but you can't really see it.
And then on the, the building height, 50 feet, what would have been for the RAC elevation building, is it, would it have been 50 plus, or... the RAC elevation building? Is it, would it have been fifty plus, or?
I think it was seventy, but let me double check. It varies depending on, uh, this is like, uh, planning area nine, and then, for planning area nine, it's seventy feet.
Okay.
Other planning areas, RAC goes all the way up to a hundred and fifty feet.
Sorry. Is that it? Okay. Anybody else have more questions?
Yes, please. So I'd like to back up a little bit, um, because it, it feels like, and we're a little bit ahead of where we should be. Um, I understood this meeting to be about the zoning and the changing of zoning of this property, correct? And, um, one of the things that kinda popped out that, um, I had questions about what is, what would be the benefit of kind of dividing, um, this property into different zones, or zoning one part of this property one way tonight, and then maybe looking at zoning it differently at a later date? Is that what we're talking about doing?
No, we're just talking about rezoning Lot One. So Lot Two and Three would remain RAC. So when you, when you do a rezoning, uh, without going through like, or establishing another PD, a brand-new plan development within, so they're trying to work within the framework of, uh, what's been established for Rock Creek Ranch, and those are the designations that are allowed. There's three commercial zone districts. They're not changing what has been applied to this one commercially, uh, or anything related to Lots Two and Three. But for Lot One, they're changing from RAC, the most intense commercial designation, to the second-most intense residential designation, uh, in order, and, and basically the only parameters that we're talking about, we're not talking about setbacks, uh, for the northern, I mean, I guess we kind of are talking about setbacks, but the, the main zoning parameters we're talking about being, uh, um, exceptional tonight from what R two A would establish are the, uh, the, uh, the, the designation for what the percentage for open space would be, sorry, uh, from forty, going from forty-five to forty. And then they're also clarifying, as Gary just stated, that, you know, they're not asking for the maximum at eighteen, because they, you know, came through a concept plan, and they were only showing, you know, ninety-two, I think, the first time, and then it went up to about a hundred. Uh, they're asking for what they've told us they wanted out there, not something greater. So, so those two designations are the ones that we're talking about being different, and staff is recommending that we don't, uh, consider a setback change at this time. You know, that's something that, uh, staff would prefer to consider once we have the context of what, I mean, we have a conceptual plan here, but we don't have, you know, any of the, the real detail. So we can kinda consider that, you know, there may be fifty or sixty feet on the north side of, uh, their property line, but why did they need, you know, what else can move around? We don't know that until we actually have a site plan to analyze, so.
Absolutely. So we're, this is being treated as three separate?
It's three separate parcels, and we will, we will get three separate final plat site plan kinda development applications for each of those lots.
Okay. Thank you. That answers that question.
Anyone else?
I have one additional question. Uh, the last time you were here, before the Planning Commission, there was talk about, uh, installation of a, uh, gateway sign at the southeast corner of, I guess it's Lot One?
Lot Three.
Is that Lot Three? Lot Three?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Is that still the plan?
That, that is the plan, and we've designated that on the final site.
On the plat, and they actually gave us an easement.
It's actually out, there's an easement for it.
Okay.
Yeah. That's already done at this time.
Right. Thank you.
One other thing.
Anthony?
Sure.
Um, has there been any work, um, Mr. Roar, done with Broome Field in regards to the, um, water quality pond? I know the last time you were in, you spoke about there being some issues that needed to be worked out with, um, with Broome Field regarding, uh, that pond. Um, is there any, has there been any movement?
Stephen, you might know more than me about that, but there has, there has been.
There's been ex- extensive involvement with, uh, Broome Field, and they've, you know, we've gotten referrals from their planning, their transportation, as well as their, um, I guess, more public works department as far as their water quality and grading, and they've, uh, approved the, they approved the, and mu- much of that work is being proposed through that final plat site plan that we already approved, and they approved that plan. So future work and development will also require those referrals and that coordination, but so far, a very extensive involvement from Broome Field, so.
I have one final question, sorry. Uh, and this is just about the, the mechanics of, of your business, but... So assuming that the, the rezoning goes through and, and Town Board approves it, you've got three lots now as a result of subdivision plan. You've got the rezoning. You're agreeing to do the, uh, in- infrastructure on the entire site, which would then create, uh, Lots Two and Three fully, uh, ready to go in terms of marketing that, uh, to the potential hotel clients who would be building hotels in those particular sites. So in terms of just understanding, uh, realistically, what would potentially come before us with respect to those, uh, hotels, I understand that they're, they're giving you LOIs with, you know, a sixty-day period and then a thirty-day close. But realistically, is, is that what you really anticipate would, would happen once the infrastructure is done, and then you're marketing to hotels that they would be expecting like a ninety-day window to turn things around?
Well, I mean, it's in the future, so, you know, I don't have a, I'll give you my crystal ball, which is that we've had quite a bit of interest here, and there is, this is, we're in a cycle, and in a cycle you have, uh, uh, waves of activity, and then it kinda goes away until the next cycle, and the waves of activity are, are dictated by or propelled by, uh, market forces of, hotels are doing really well right now, uh, overall, they're doing really well, and, uh, debt and equity, which are both chasing a lot of hotels. So we have lots of multifamily apartments getting built like crazy, and that's starting to slow down. Right now I have a lot of apartments and self, or I'm sorry, a lot of hotels and self-storage. Those are just in full swing right now. Uh, so we have, uh, we've done three hotel deals on other parcels in town. Uh, we've got a site in Littleton that we probably could take four or five backups on hotel. I mean, hotels are very active right now, so the sooner we can do this, the better. So I think we'll get one of these done next year, one of these two, uh, pad two or three with a hotel. I would be my crystal ball for sure, is that we get one of the two done. I can't guarantee it, but I, I think so, yes.
The, the reason why I'm asking is because the, the Town Board just approved our first hotel as a town, uh, just a week or two ago, and, uh, you know, for us to now get a second hotel, I, I think is a great development, and I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, you know, can the town actually move as fast as the market is requiring it to move to actually get something like this done? So it's, it's helpful to know what's expected in the marketplace, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
What's BBS, BVSD?
Boulder Valley School District?
Okay, thank you.
And we just referred one to them, and it may have been this one, but there's been such a flurry. Uh, this one would be the one that makes sense, but, uh, I couldn't tell you for sure, but I'll double check and make sure they get noticed if they haven't.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Roar.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Okay. I guess if there's no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Comments from the commission? Who'd like to go first? Jason, you're on the end, maybe you're in the hot seat.
All right. Uh, I think the first time that the applicant came in and spoke to us about this property and, and talking about the, the chance or the opportunity to build these high-end townhomes and, and everything, looking across Autry Reservoir to the mountains was such a great opportunity. Um, I walked around the reservoir, and I think it's a tremendous opportunity for the Bell Flatiron, or, is that what they're called? No, you know, flatirons. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for them also, because it's gonna improve their view coming back across, instead of having a seventy-five, eighty-foot-high, um, RAC, you've got residential-looking, um, facilities that, that kinda tie in the landscaping with the reservoir. I think it creates a nice, kind of, finished look to, to the reservoir on the residential side. Um, so that's, I didn't even think about that on the, when, when he first spoke about it. And then walking around the entire reservoir, I took every angle in, and I think, uh, it's a, a great advantage to the, the town. I think that's all I had.
All right, thanks. Jerry, did you have any comments?
I do. I, I also walked around the, uh, Autry Reservoir and took a look at that property there, and, and being a Realtor, I can totally recognize the, uh, value of that view and, and the water, mountains and the water together. I, I, I'd like to look more specifically at that setback, um, when, when we get onto the next step of, of actual, uh, drawings of what, what's gonna be there and where it's gonna go. Um, but I think it's gonna be a fantastic product. I think it's a good design.
Okay, thanks, sir. I like it. Lisa?
Um, generally, just wanna say I'm supportive of the request, um, to rezone residential for this location. Um, I think it's appropriate. We can see that the retail in the community is struggling somewhat in some areas, and additional residential should help support that. I'd also support the application at eighteen dwelling units per acre, but, um, it sounds like that's not what you desire. Um, and just generally speaking, I'd like to go on record and state that, um, I would support an affordable housing component, um, as part of this application. We don't have any in Superior. Um, I do think we have an ethical obligation to provide in this community. Um, this is a good location. It's got lots of nearby amenities, um, direct access to transit. Um, recognize that not everyone might agree with me on that intent, so, that's all. Thanks.
Lisa, Mark?
Uh, I too, uh, am in support of this rezoning application. Uh, obviously, this isn't the first time that this, uh, concept has come before the Planning Commission, and, uh, I think recognizing the, the unique challenges posed, uh, by this, uh, project, that we've got now three lots, uh, with two hotels, uh, in, in the concept, and, you know, just the realistic challenges that, uh, the applicant is facing in marketing those hotels without the infrastructure, um, I think that it, obviously, in a perfect world, it would have made sense to do it all together, but, um, this isn't a perfect world, so we gotta do the best that we can do, and I think, uh, by approving the rezoning application, allowing the residential component to move forward, and allowing the infrastructure to be built, uh, will more, uh, quickly enable the hotels to come to fruition, um, which I think will benefit the town, uh, because right now this has just been a vacant lot for, forever. And, uh, I think this is going to be a spectacular project, and I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, what those views look like from, you know, the balconies of the residences up against Autry Reservoir, so I'm in support of the rezoning application.
All right, thanks. Anthony?
Yes, absolutely. In addition to what everyone has said, um, I too, um, am in support of the application to rezone this property. Um, I, uh, agree that, um, this is something that needs to be done for that, to that land and that area. Um, it's, for me, it almost feels like a blighted area that needs to, um, eat improvements soon rather than later, and, um, that's why I would approve this. And once approved, if approved, um, I would like to see this project started sooner rather than later. Um, I know that there are a lot of, um, ifs and a lot of, um, obstacles as well, but, um, I do think that this area needs some attention soon. So I hope I didn't lose what I wanted to say, is that I support the rezoning of this, so.
Thanks, Anthony. Phyllis?
Yeah, um, I support the application and agree with what everybody said about the vacant lot. Every time I go by there, I think, when is that going to be developed and see all the prairie dogs running around, so I'm in favor of seeing this go forward.
Thanks. Well, I, I agree with everything that was said. I think, uh, I think it would be a great project for the community. I, I can't imagine there will be any difficulty selling, selling out those townhomes fairly briskly. I appreciate the applicant taking the time, Mr. Roar, to explain the, kind of, the business realities of why a rezoning is appropriate. I, it makes perfect sense to me. In my opinion, it's something that should happen, so. I guess if we don't have any other comments, uh, does anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lysus?
Town Superior Planning.
Town Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number PC dash one-three, Series two thousand sixteen. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of an amendment to the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development to Rezone Lot One, Block One, Rock Creek Ranch, filing seventeen C from Regional Activity Center, RAC, zoning to residential R two A zoning, Case Number RZN two thousand sixteen dash oh-one.
Hey, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Reese, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motions carried.
Well, we want to add the conditions.
Oh, you wanna?
Are the, aren't the conditions in the resolution?
Subject to the?
No, it's not needed, okay.
Okay. All right, good. Yeah, okay. Thanks, thanks for the catch, though. Okay, staff announcements?
Uh, the only, well, I guess there will not be a Planning Commission meeting, uh, the first week of October, and I also wanted to remind everyone that the Superior Sports Stable Tour, the last of the tours is set for Saturday at ten, and nine and ten AM. Um, and there was a, an email that went out. If you didn't get it, I can port it on to you guys, but, uh, uh, I know that we did a tour. I think it's been since February that we went out there, and I was planning on setting a second one up, and it hasn't been set, but this would be a good opportunity to get out there, so.
Have you had good response from the community to that email that, uh, did that go out to everybody, or was that just to the commission?
I, well, I don't know that, uh, there's any response to that. I mean, I, I haven't looked to see who, who signed up, so that you click on a link, and then basically you register to go for that day, so they know how many people are coming, and I haven't followed up to see what their registration.
I took a tour.
Did you?
I went on, on Sunday, and I, I recommend everybody go check it out, because it is a spectacular facility. But it was also really interesting hearing it from their perspective in terms of, you know, they're just sitting there in isolation, and there's a bunch of dirt in front of them, and there's limited parking, and they're, they're kinda terrified about the next two years.
Yeah.
And about the status of their business, and I think that from a Planning Commission perspective, hearing it from, you know, the, the business owners', uh, you know, perspective, really, uh, I think it's a valuable perspective. And also, the, the, the view that the restaurant is going to have, it, they have this walkout deck there, and just looking at the flatirons, it's, it's an unbelievable view.
And the gyms, the, I can't remember the name of it.
The basketball court.
Yeah, the basketball court.
Impact sports, yeah.
They have a phenomenal view.
Yeah, the basketball court within the volleyball court there, and it's indoor soccer, and full gym, and batting cages, and they'll have golf, and the hockey rinks are spectacular. It's, it's, it's a great thing that appearance to Superior.
Yeah, if you, if you open the link to that website that accompanied that email, um, the programming is unbelievable. I had, frankly, I didn't realize all of the offerings that this facility has. It's, it's great. Okay, anything else? That's it for me. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.